I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being broadcast, aired live and recorded on BTV. Like to go into some condolences that I have here. First one is to President Gallagher in regards to attached copy of a letter condolences forward to the family of William P. Origi upon his passing on 19 September 2019. Mr. Origi served in the 11th Fighter Control Squadron, 4th Fighter Command, United States Army Air Force Asia-Pacific Theater of Operations during World War II. Also condolences for Albert E. Kelso. Mr. Kelso served aboard the USS Wifal's DE-6 with combat engagements in the United States Navy during World War II. Convey those consuls. I'd like to have a moment of silence for others as well. Approval of minutes, minutes from September 3, 2019. I'll entertain-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Approval of September 17, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Announcements from the President. I do have an announcement in regards to some of the meetings for the Mitchell Elementary School Project. I've got a couple here. On Thursday, October 3, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., there'll be a meeting at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Lecture Hall 415, Center Street, Bridgewater. There will be free childcare services provided.
Mr. President, could you just clarify that that is not the auditorium for people so they know where to go? It's upstairs.
To clarify, it's not the auditorium for people to, they need to go upstairs. Thank you.
If people come and look, they might get upset.
Nope, I appreciate that. Also, there will be two meetings at Better Bean, 23 Central Square, on Monday, October 7, and Tuesday, October 8, or Wednesday, October 9. I guess there'll be three, actually, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Okay. Proclamations, we don't have any proclamations. Citizens open forum. Are there any citizens who would like to speak? Appointments, we have an appointment for the Conan Trust, Marie Fahey. I don't see anything in the packet. Am I missing it?
No, this is a straightforward reappointment. She's been serving on the Conan Trust, been quite a valuable asset to the Conan Trust, so I would encourage your reappointment.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint.
Okay.
I'd just like to add that Mrs. Fahey is a wonderful woman, is involved in the community quite a bit, and a very good appointment to, continued appointment to this trust.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Fahey. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Fahey.
Motion to take item G out of order. It's not 7:35 yet.
Second.
Okay. Taking G license transactions out of order.
Motion to take item H out of order. I'm just trying to kill time.
Gotcha.
Second.
Second. Okay, we don't have any presentations. It is now, I have by my watch, 7:35. I'll be opening the meeting for Order 0FY20-002, loan order, High Street Water Treatment Facility. At their meeting held on September 16, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend approval of this measure. On 9/17, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval. This measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website for public hearing. So, with that being said, are there any general questions from the public? Seeing none. Is anyone from the public here to speak in favor? Seeing none? Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Seeing none? Any questions from the town councilors?
I have a question.
Mr. Wood?
The presentation that Santech gave us during the committee meeting, is that available to people online?
That should be available to people online. If it's not, we can certainly get it up.
It was an excellent presentation. I thought it should be available in case anyone has any questions.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to close the hearing at 7:36. We will be voting on this under legislation for action.
Motion to take item J out of order.
Second.
Okay, item J. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All righty. Council Wood?
So, I asked to have the discussion item on here. We've been doing this for a few years now. We hear, you know, the results of the Finance Committee and several other committees when they're presenting things to us, but we don't usually have, like, an annual reporting process where someone like the Rec Committee, or the Conservation Committee, or the Planning Board, or something like that would come forward and present, like, a, you know, an annual message from the committee to this committee. I think it would help if we had that, that kind of communication. If you read the admin code, there's a lot of interaction between the town manager and the committees, but also there's interaction between the committees and the town council. And I believe that by asking committees to come forward, you know, representatives come forward, talk about their, the actions within their committee, what strategy they're thinking about, impediments that they may have, things like that, it would be very beneficial to the council and the community as a whole. So I wanted to open up that as a discussion item.
Anyone? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd agree. I mean, I think it's important that not only us, but the folks of the town hear about what's going on with all these various different committees so that, you know, we actually have even more transparency into them. So I'd be all in favor of doing something like that, and whether it's through a resolution to the town manager to direct him to bring that forward or not, we can figure that out moving forward.
Okay. Ms. Loesch?
I believe we talked about this before, maybe even setting up a schedule so folks know when to come. And it, you know, doesn't have to be super formal, but just so we can kind of start from the admin code from A to Z and ensure that we don't miss anyone, and try to getting them scheduled in our agendas proactively, I think will be helpful too, so they have time to prepare and know what we're looking for from them, et cetera. Just that expectation.
I would second that, too, to give people enough runway to be able to prepare for when they're coming in as well. Give them as far advanced notice as possible.
Right.
Great. Mr. Souza?
I think it's a great way, because, you know, there are committees and commissions out there. People don't even know who they are or what they do, okay? How they could help them, or sometimes those committees need help, and the people could come in and help them. Or, you know, if you're looking for people to fill empty positions, it's a lot easier if they know what that position is about before the position comes available. And I think that's another way of really letting the people in town know, all these things are out there, here's what they're doing, here's how they're helping you and all the community, come on board.
I agree.
Great.
I'd just add, picking up on what you folks just said, we're going to be setting our meeting schedule for next year very soon. Should also just, in that meeting schedule, or in a concurrent order, resolution, whatever we want to call it, say, here's the folks we'd like to hear at different points in our meetings. You know, so everyone knows what the meeting schedule is, and here's who we're going to hear from that, in that meeting. So, just a suggestion as a way to kill two birds with one stone.
And picking up on that, maybe not get a lot of people in our meeting, but maybe one or two committees on a given evening so that, you know, they're not overwhelmed. But I like the runway idea about giving them a lot of lead time. And, you know, often it could be the chair, but it doesn't have to be the chair. The committee can just send a representative to talk about the committee, what they do, the role that they do, maybe active things that they're working on.
Yeah. To that point, I just think just setting their expectations of what we're looking for, so they don't come in here and be like, someone told me to be here on March 12. I don't know why I'm here.
We've seen that on a national stage. It didn't work all that well on the town. I'd also probably suggest giving them maybe five minutes. For most people, I think that'll be plenty. For a few, it may not be enough, but I think we can set that expectation to keep everything going as well.
If I could, if it suits the council, I'll work with a council clerk to try to generate a schedule along with your meeting dates. We'll tie, try to tie certain committees to the schedule, and we'll present that, obviously, for your approval.
Do you want to shoot for January? Or is that too soon?
I think we're going to be having our council schedule come out in the next month or so, and so January should be fine to give the folks two or three months ahead.
That'd be probably a good target for the first meeting is January?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does that work? Okay. Great. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to F, item B. It is now 7:42. I'm going to reopen the hearing, which was continued from October 15. Order 0FY20-014, transfer order, High Street Dam and Bridge preliminary work. At their meeting held on September 3, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval of this measure. The measure was duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website for a public hearing. On September 3, the town council continued this hearing to 9 September 17, pending a disposition of Finance Committee. On September 17, the town council continued the hearing to October 1, pending a disposition from Finance Committee. The measure may be finally considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing, pending a final disposition by the Finance Committee. All righty, so-
It's my understanding there is no final disposition from the Finance Committee.
All right, so-
Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I would request a continuation of this hearing until your next meeting at 7:35.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have discussion on this.
Okay.
We're going to be going on two months now. And I brought this up in our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I'll just, I'll ask the town manager the same question I asked in that, and I'm sure he'll give the same answer he gave in that. When do we get to a point where we either, as a council, just declare an emergency to get things done? Because these things need to move forward, because we're looking at, you know, Massachusetts state deadlines, et cetera. And what are our other alternatives to get this moving forward? Because I really want to see it on our next agenda to be done.
So I think, as I mentioned in the Budget and Finance Committee, there are two, possibly three courses to take here. One, as Counselor Fitzgibbons points out, is to declare emergency. I'm very hesitant to go that route on a transfer order is one thing, but on a loan order, I'd be very cautious about doing that because that affects, potentially affects the bond issuance and bond council's ability to write an opinion concerning that bond issuance. So I'm reluctant to go that route. There are two other ways to sort of resolve this problem. One is probably almost as extreme, and that is an order of necessity. You can declare, when you don't have a quorum and there's an urgency to a matter, and again, it's all dictated by law, but you can take up a matter by order of necessity. Again, not the ideal way, but that's a short-term solution. The longest, the longer-term solution is to have the council look at, very specifically, the issue of Finance Committee members, how the charter defines Finance Committee membership and the numbers and so forth, and potentially make a change, propose a change in the charter for that single issue that would obviously then have to go to the legislature and be reviewed and voted. So there are, there's no ideal solution here, but if we have chronic problems trying to get a quorum on the Finance Committee, certainly looking for members, as we have been over the last few years, to fill some of the vacant seats, and then sort of rotate out some of the folks that haven't been able to attend the meetings is the best solution for us, but it's not the only solution for us. So that's a long answer to your short question.
No, thank you. And I just wanted all the council to hear that, because I heard it earlier as I was expressing some frustration in the Budget and Finance Committee, so I just wanted everyone to hear it. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Mr. Souza?
Through you, to the town manager. How many members does that committee have, Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee is made up of nine members. Three are appointed by the town council, three are appointed by me, and three are appointed by the town clerk.
And how many of those positions are currently filled?
Right now, I believe, seven.
And the quorum is?
Quorum is five.
Five. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to continue until our October 15 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Voice vote, hand? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay. All righty, item I, Town Manager's Report.
Mr. President-
Excuse me, the brief Town Manager's Report.
I just have to talk faster. Mr. President, there was Scrivener's Error, and as the council has asked, the standing item of the Mitchell School did not make it onto the Town Manager's Report, so I will take a little license and just remind folks that the Mitchell School vote is coming up on October 19, as you mentioned. And there are a number of different forums in which to get some information, including the Bridgewater Schools website, all the materials that the Mitchell School Committee has looked at and used to make a decision about where they were going to go is on there. And as I've mentioned to the council before, we certainly will be prepared for whichever way the town chooses to vote, but I will remind you that that is October 19, Saturday, October 19 is the election.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, so one of the concerns I'm hearing from folks out there is, you know, obviously the tax impact to them. Are there ways that residents of the town can work to abate their taxes through different programs that the town and/or state offers?
There are a number of different ways to abate or exempt folks from taxation.
Excuse me, one second. Mr. Rawls, is this okay?
It's fine.
It's fine?
Yeah, it's been a standing agenda item, and it was stated previously that it would be on the agenda each week. I think this was just simply a Scrivener's Error, so.
Okay. No, I just, I want to make sure we're following-
If it wasn't something that was standing, that had been discussed as standing and addressed as standing for every single week, I'd say probably an issue, but I think you're fine.
Okay. All right, apologies for the interruption. Go ahead.
Good job.
Bye, Mr. Dutton.
So there are a number of different statutory exemptions that are available to citizens, as well as certain abatement opportunities. So those are all available on our website. Just go to the assessors webpage, and you'll see exemptions, and you'll also see abatement options right there. So I encourage people to do that.
And the SAVE program.
And the SAVE program is our, essentially, a senior tax write-off program. Seniors who qualify can volunteer their time for any one of the town departments and pare down their taxes. They get up to 15, I believe it's $1,500 in essentially abatement on their taxes.
Thank you. I just, you know, we want everyone to have as full information as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If I could just add to that, a small ask, if maybe this week, if the town could put on Facebook and do a blast the links to where they can go, let's make this easy for people to find, to be able to read, to understand. And I think it's of a very sensitive nature, considering what we've got coming up.
That is absolutely doable.
Thank you.
The happy news to announce, get back to my, okay, very happy news to announce, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs notified us last week that we are the recipients of a local acquisition for natural diversity, which is land, is the acronym for that, grant, in any case, in the amount of $325,974. And that is the maximum amount we were eligible to receive to offset the purchase of five acres off of Broad Street, which we will pursue and will be added to the existing 70 acres Stiles and Hart Park. So that grant certainly helps us secure better access to the property and better parking, you know, future parking in a trailhead, and much better handicap, well, it will provide handicapped access to the park as well. So we had a lot of help putting the grant together. It was a very competitive grant, and so we are very lucky to have secured the maximum amount that we were eligible for. I did want to thank Harry Bailey from our Conservation Commission, and also the park steward for that Stiles and Hart Park, for hanging in and providing guidance, and also heading up the tour that we did, the site visit that we did, and also Kitty Doherty for providing constant support and guidance on this particular effort. So we also, obviously, a lot of the folks in my office and Finance did a great job pulling together the application with a lot of different pieces to it. So my thanks to them. So happy to report that one. I believe last week, last meeting, rather, Dr. Hunt had asked about the status of the energy assessment. We were doing an energy, or we were planning on doing some energy assessment. We were looking to get that done for little or no money with a vendor that was helping us to put together the program. Unfortunately, that vendor backed out, and so that has left that project in a little bit of a standstill. We do anticipate meeting with the Energy Committee in November or December to try to reset that effort. If it ends up being a potentially costly initiative, and this is just the assessment, we will be looking to put that on our capital plan for the upcoming year. So that is, that's the status of that. Honestly, we've had a huge number of projects going on, as you well know, so been a little bit stretched, but energy assessment is a key piece for us moving forward, so we're not, we're not going to abandon that by any means. And then finally, the strategic planning process. If you recall, we hired Paradigm to give us some loose, not loose, some basic guidance on coming up with strategic plan. I talked to Mr. Lynch a couple of weeks ago, and just to confirm what we were planning, we have put that on hold. He's done half, roughly half of the work, sort of behind-the-scenes work, and we're waiting for the master planning process to come closer to finalization before we ask him to conduct the balance of that strategic planning effort. So I anticipate, as far as I can see, that the master planning process will probably wrap up end of the year or early next year. So that, we're basically on schedule there, I think. That's what we're looking at. So happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions? Mr. Colm Bodas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Dutton, what is the value of doing the energy assessment? Is that required in order to receive green community grants, or is it just for to see how we're doing for internal use, or what's the benefit of doing that assessment?
I think the initial thought was that we've got a large, open space, namely, the golf course, and we were looking to try, originally, we're looking to offset some of the electricity usage out there by the installation of panels. We looked, we actually went out to bid to do, you know, panels over the parking area, and unfortunately, some of the state program rules have changed, so that dried up the pool of bidders on that. But it got us, and I think Dr. Hunt can speak to it better than I can, but I think it got the Energy Committee thinking that, you know, better for us if we had a more comprehensive plan or a more comprehensive strategic view of our energy usage and our energy production capabilities. So we began to look at the potential for wind energy. I think there was a wind energy audit a number of years ago that actually identified the golf course as not being ideal. But regardless, you know, our town buildings, if we could, you know, do a more comprehensive view of our town buildings and our energy usage and potential energy production possibilities, that that was sort of where we were going there. But there's not a requirement of green communities. In fact, green communities, we secured $200,000 this year to go towards the LED light project, which was helpful, but not a requirement for green communities.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Loesch, did you have something?
No, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Wood?
I simply wanted to congratulate you on the grant. You know, I missed the site walk the day that you went out and unfortunately had to work at my paying job, you know? But I do want, there were a lot of people involved in this, and most people don't know that overall, the journey's been about five years putting this package together. You know, Harry Bailey has a vision that even wouldn't be on mine, which was to create access for the community, and he's got an idea about putting handicapped access all the way down to one of the ponds there. Kitty Doherty was involved because she introduced me to the, one of the property owners involved. And what we couldn't talk about, it's been a long legal process, very complex legal process, as lawyers make it very complex. And it's coming around, so I'm very excited about this. Even though I'm not an outdoors person, I do look forward to being able to park and walk in this wonderful parkland, which sits in the center of my district. So congratulations on the grant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does anyone have anything for Mr. Dutton for the next meeting?
Make sure the Mitchell School gets on?
You got it. And again, council, anytime between now and-
And I'd like an update, I'd like an update on Broad.
Broad Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. The property?
Happy to do that.
Yeah, and not just an update, but let's talk in depth in regards to next steps, if there are any. I know we can't talk about it now, but I don't think I'm speaking just for myself, that we're getting a little aggravated with that property. So, anyone else? Colm Bodas?
I just want to mention, if we want to, instead of it, the Broad Street property's appearing under Town Manager Report, if we want to have a more interactive discussion, maybe it just should be under discussion, just to-
I'm open to either.
Keep things kosher.
Yeah, I would-
So I'll withdraw that from the Town Manager Report, and let's ask the town council president to put it on as a discussion item.
Okay. And do you mind putting that on there? Great, it'll be on the next agenda. Anything else, gentlemen, ladies? Lady? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. Okay, committee reports.
We did meet tonight. If I may go?
Well, I guess you can, because you already started talking.
Maybe, maybe, sorry.
Get in the way of your progress.
I yield my time back to whoever had their hand raised first.
I'll go right ahead, Mr. Dutton.
I know.
Okay, tonight we covered a couple of different things. We've continued the special reserve fund discussion order, but we've also voted to recommend the loan order for the community septic management program. recommend the loan order for the community septic management program, as well as the loan order for the capital sewer planning purpose transfer. And the key behind this is that, you know, I think, again, FinCom hasn't been able to take action on those yet, but hopefully, they will by next meeting, so that they appear on the next meeting. The loan order for the septic program is especially important because it allows homeowners that need a low-value loan to get it through the town, which gets it from the state, and it's very beneficial for system replacement. Thank you.
Great. Loesch?
Just wanted to give an update, the Strategic Planning Committee met last week. We were able to update the resolution that was sent to that committee back in 2018 of the Town Manager's Goals. So, we're roughly 13 months since we started the conversation, but we're looking to get it wrapped up tonight. We all worked together as a committee, you all saw it as a council. It had some edits, and now it's in front of you as an updated resolution, so hopefully, we can move forward on that. And we are also looking for, you know, as we just got the update from the Strategic Planning Consultant, Mr. Lynch has done half the work, we're working for, we're waiting for the bigger project, you know, we're looking at other things that we could be thinking about outside of that as a committee. So, if anyone has other ideas, please feel free to share them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Legislation for action. Order OFY 2021 rescind and revoke order 0FY 18-022 Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for High Street Water Treatment Facility. At their meeting held on September 16th, the Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend approval of this measure. On September 17th, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval. The measure may be finally voted this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we discussed this before, but just to reiterate, the reason we're rescinding it, and you'll see another legislative action here to vote a different value. This order was created early in the design process, and there were some required design changes that create a change in the price of the whole project.
Driven by the state and federal governments.
Driven by the state and federal governments, yes.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodus?
Yep.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Sorry, seven in favor, none against.
All righty. Okay, moving on to order 0FY 20-22, loan order, High Street Water Treatment Facility. At their meeting held on September 16th, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend approval of this measure. On September 17th, 2019, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval. The measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website for public hearing. The measure may be finally considered this evening, pending the conclusion of the scheduled public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion?
This just resets the numbers, as Mr. Wood was saying earlier.
Yes. Okay. When you get to see the SandTech presentation, we learned a couple of things when they came in and talked to us. First of all, the systems are connected, the Carver Pond pumps, as well as the High Street pumps, are all connected in the larger water system. There's not a break between the two. So, by improving this treatment plant, it improves the overall system by something like 40%, I think is the number they threw out there. But two other key elements is that Bridgewater, as everyone knows, has a lot of iron in the water, and they will, there is, and there will be a way to, I think, I don't remember the chemical terms, I didn't really take a lot of chemistry in my software degree, but anyway. So, it stays in a soluble form unless there's chlorine present, and then it becomes particulate. And that's what you see sometimes in the water when you see dirty and cloudy water, because the department has actually added chlorine or bleach to sanitize the water. So, it makes it appear a little bit cloudy, but in actuality, it's perfectly safe to drink, although don't wash any white T-shirts in it for a while. So, the plants will enhance that and improve that whole process, and make the entire system healthier in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Do we have to close the hearing, too?
You did.
Okay, I did. Okay, great. All righty. All right, order 0FY 20-24, transfer order, capital sewer special purpose transfer. Finance Committee met September 30th, 2019. A disposition will be provided upon receipt. Budget and Finance Committee met on October 1st, 2019. A disposition will be provided to the full council. This measure may be finally considered pending disposition from the Finance Committee and Budget and Finance Committee. I will entertain a motion to postpone, because I don't believe they met.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in, voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay, postponed. All righty. Order 0FY 19-021, establishment, establish Town Manager Goals. At their meeting held on September 25th, that should be 2019, not 2029, the Strategic Planning Committee voted 3-0 to recommend adoption of this measure with proposed amendments. This measure may be finally considered this evening, pending adoption of any proposed amendments.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to amend is indicated?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendments? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I would just like to thank the Strategic Planning Committee for undertaking this, and we do move at the speed of government sometimes, I understand that, but you guys did a great job, and I'm sure, working with the Town Manager, you came, you know, reading through it, it looks like it's a really good set of goals, and I appreciate all the work that they did. So, I fully support the amendments, I fully support establishing the goals tonight.
Any other discussion?
I may. So, the amendment is striking what I originally wrote as this space intentionally left blank. So, I second the comment that the team did a great job putting these together. We don't need to read all of them, but it would be good to summarize, which is the goals cover the fire station, the Memorial Building, the school district, Broad Street, Elm Street, creating communications standard operating procedure, and language around the budget resolution with smaller points underneath all those major points. Thank you.
Great. Any other discussion? Okay, voice vote on the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. We will do a voice, roll call vote, excuse me, on the order as amended.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Super. Old business, we do not have any. New business, order 0FY 20-025 pedestrian tunnel. This is sponsored by Councilor Wood and Councilor Rushton.
I'd make the motion to refer to the Public Safety Committees to get the discussion rolling.
I second that.
I have no discussion.
I've introduced this to get the discussion rolling, as Mr. Fitzgibbons stated, I'm not an engineer, I don't know if it's possible, what the cost would be. I do know there's been some look into the possibility of a bridge over Plymouth Street, and we had the discussion last week about pedestrian safety and some of the issues that are at intersections. So, by giving this to Public Safety, hopefully, they'll take it up and further the discussion about the concentration of students and vehicles and the risk that is at that intersection, and ways to mitigate that, possibly including a tunnel. Thank you.
Great. Any questions? Mr. Colombodus?
So, is Mr. Rushton Chair of that committee?
Yes.
The Public Safety Committee?
Yes.
Yeah, so perhaps I could direct, ask you, Mr. Wood, to, I certainly wouldn't want to vote on anything without some kind of cost estimate attached to it, so perhaps you could work with Mr. Rushton to get some ballpark thing in committee, or that, I think that should happen before it comes back to the council, is what I'm-
Mr. Wood? I mean, excuse me, Mr. Fitzgibbons, my first bump.
Mr. Chase and I are also on that committee, so I think we hear your comments, Mr. Colombodus, and I think, you know, it really is, you know, kind of this space intentionally left blank. I don't think you're going to see this next week or the following week, you know, I don't even know if you'll see it by the end of the year. But how do we better serve the pedestrians, not only for the college, but for general downtown circulation around that area, because, you know, we've got a big parking lot there, et cetera, and, you know, we can do the due diligence in the committee to be able to say, "Oh, we looked at this, well, what about this? What about this idea? Let's bring in the college and the university and talk to them, and what are their ideas, et cetera." So, I completely agree with your point that it needs full vetting before it comes back.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of sending it to Public Safety Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it? All righty, 0FY 20-26, free cash allocation to trust fund.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees to get the discussion going?
Second.
I'd like to hear from the Town Manager.
Mr. President, this transfer allocates free cash generally according to the council's policy, but as you know, we've had a free cash figure of about $2.5 million as we walked through with the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. The Finance Director will show you exactly where the funds came from, and exactly where we're proposing to, why we're proposing the allocation we are.
Any questions for the Town Manager? All right, seeing none, all in favor of sending this to the Budget, Finance, and Budget Finance Committees, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Order FY 20-027, transfer order, capital transfer roadway drainage, Flag Street.
Motion to refer to the Budget, Finance, and Finance Committees?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Dutton, would you like to cover this real quick?
Quickly, this transfer is requesting $500,000 to address the engineering, complete engineering, and then the installation of drainage on Flag Street, and this is obviously as a result of a survey done, underground survey done of the drainage system, the existing drainage system, which is rapidly failing.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
So, I see here, Mr. Dutton, that the use of funds is identified as roadway drainage emergency. How big of an emergency is it? And if the Finance Committee can't meet for two months to answer the question of whether we want to spend the money, what's going to happen?
Probably a poor use of words in this case. It doesn't, yet, qualify as an emergency, as the Town Council and as the Charter points out, it's not that kind of emergency in terms of priority for the roadways department, it's at the top of the list. So, to answer your question about a delay, if there is a substantial delay, I know Mr. Ledoux would like to get this project underway and completed by, you know, ideally by the end of the year, but that's probably not going to be possible. So, he's just concerned that the winter will cause further deterioration, a lot of deterioration in the drainage system, and then-
And the money will go up?
Well, actually, probably not, but it could. So, he would like to get this tackled sooner rather than later. So, your point about if there's a two-month delay because we can't get a quorum in the Finance Committee, or for whatever reason, we'll have to address that. Thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you. If I could just throw you to the Town Manager a follow-up question, which is that, I think previously, we'd spoken about this issue on Flag Street, and I recall that the drainage consists of a combination of the corrugated steel pipe and a certain amount of concrete piping.
Right.
And I was just wondering if, would this project cover the replacement of all of the corrugated steel pipe?
Yes.
It would.
It would. But it would not cover the replacement of the concrete, because the concrete, according to the surveys, is in perfectly fine-
Is in good shape, yeah. Thank you.
Colombodus?
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, is there, are there sidewalks along this subject piece of roadway?
If I could?
Yes.
There is on the Southern Mo side.
Is it a real sidewalk, or?
It's an asphalt sidewalk. I'm trying to recollect what the actual nature of the curbing is, but it runs along the side that is adjacent to the state property, the cornfield.
Right. I guess, Mr. Dutton, I'd just like to remind you of our commitment under the Complete Streets policy is to accommodate multi modes of transportation, and that that should be kept in mind when looking at this project.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, I actually, I have one thing to add. I did get some questions, emails, and I don't remember the answer, so I need to ask it again. So, Mr. Dutton, where the work is being done, are you aware of any pending projects or development that is going to be within the space that's being replaced?
On Flag Street?
Yes.
No. I'm not aware of any.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions? All righty. So, we're sending it off to-
Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it? All righty. Order 0FY 20-29, transfer order, CPC funding for Broad Street property purchase.
Lease payments?
Uh, excuse me, 28. Oh, I skipped one, I'm sorry. Capital transfer FY 20, lease payment.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Second. Mr. Dutton, would you like to add anything to this?
These are outstanding lease payments that we have for ambulances, and the street sweeper, and the sidewalk plow.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it? Okay, now, we're on 0FY 20-29, transfer order, CPC fund, funding for Broad Street property purchase.
Motion to send to Budget and Finance, Finance Committee?
Second.
Question. Does this need to go to CPC as well?
Yes, I could, let me explain this. This is, unfortunately, given the timing of the state grant, we had anticipated hearing, and the state had explained to us that we would get a yes or no answer on the state grant in December, so that we, at the time, shouldn't anticipate closing on any real estate transactions until, you know, middle event, towards the end of January. Surprisingly, we found out last week about the grant, and so we want to make sure that we're well within the window that the grant will, has sort of outlined for us. So, this is on for first reading. You will not see this again until the CPC has endorsed it and recommended it, but we did want to get it in for first reading, just so that we didn't lose the opportunity, that we reduced the risk of losing the opportunity of availing ourselves of the state grant funding.
Okay, so when this comes back to us for final consideration, we'll have feedback from Budget and Finance, Finance Committee, and CPC?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Mr. Colombodus?
So, is this, the state legislation regarding the Community Preservation Act doesn't require that a proposal originate from the CPC, does it?
No, the CPC has to recommend it, though.
Right, right.
You can't expend without the CPC recommending.
But more typically, we would, kind of best practice, really, is for something to come from, this is really just extenuating circumstances to discuss.
Exactly. We would not normally put this in front of you as a first reading until the CPC had actually voted and recommended it.
Yeah, and so it's kind of backwards- Yeah, so it's kind of backwards, but gotta do it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Wood?
So, just to make it clear, I think it's clear, but maybe not so much. So, the grant that we talked about earlier will offset this amount, so it's not this plus the grant amount that we're talking about. It's, it's within the 500, and the grant will cover 325 of it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Columbotus?
So, we're, this 475 figure, that's, we know, that's a known, that's not going to change, right?
Correct.
That wouldn't go up, right? Because I'm just worried that if it were to go up between now and the second reading, this first reading would not have been valid, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All ready? And then we have Resolution R FY 20-004, 2020 Town Council Meeting Dates.
Motion to refer to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
Okay, motion and second. Mr. Wood?
I don't know, do we need to do that, because?
It's, it's, it's...
Have we done that in the past?
I'd like, I think it's worth hearing the, the main gist of the rationale for these meetings.
Oh, yeah, we can hear, we can hear it now, but I'm just saying, we're, we're doing it under the council rules and procedures, so I figured we'd just move it there for a thumbs up, but I, I...
Probably come back unchanged.
Yeah, I could, I could certainly be encouraged to withdraw my motion.
Procedural question, does it have to go to a committee?
No.
Review?
So, maybe I can...
Let's have discussion.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, the dates, Anne does a fantastic job at looking at her calendar each year, anticipates holiday schedules due to school vacations and other things, and you see the asterisk. And I just follow her lead and become the sponsor of it. So, it's really something that's worked out for a number of years now, so we could probably keep it at this level, because I don't think if it went to committee, that there would probably be any changes. That's the one at the table here would make a change.
The only other piece of discussion, I know I won't be here May 5th, 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, so we'll just put this up.
I'd just like to suggest that then we have the Town Manager pair up with, given this meeting schedule, what we talked about earlier, as far as, you know, starting to schedule departments in.
Okay. Mr. Dutton, would that work for the next meeting? Do you think you could have that kind of finalized, so we can have this in front of us?
Sure.
Any objection to that?
Finalized might be a strong word, but...
Suggested.
Post the final?
Yeah, suggested tentative.
Guidelines.
Guidelines. Proposed.
Okay. So, there's no motion?
We're staying here.
It's staying here, so we'll have it on, we'll have it on the next agenda. Okay, great. All righty. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens who would like to come up and make comments? Seeing none. Council comments. I will start with Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I really just want to do one thing tonight, which is to wish our fellow councillor, Matt Rushton, a happy birthday.
Hopefully celebrating.
Now he's in class.
Priorities in order.
I know, that's right, he's got class. But while he's celebrating at class, all right. Thank you. Columbotus?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Loesch?
I just want to thank all that came out to the Cross Street informational session last week. We will most likely have another one at some point in 2020. It will not be May 5th, because I will not be here. But it was helpful information. I did get some folks who wanted flyers or things to be put in the mail, so we can look into that for future meetings. But I just want to thank the Town Manager, Engineer, Ms. Burke, for coming out to kind of give their expertise to the folks of Cross Street Region and answer the questions. And I hope the 5K went well. I don't know if Dennis won by default, because I didn't run.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wood?
Just say, great meeting. You're still under an hour, and if we stop talking, you know, stay under an hour. Thank you.
That was not my goal, Mr. Wood, but thank you anyway. Mr. Chase?
No, no comment?
Okay. I heard what Bill Wood said, I have no comment.
Just two things. One, I want to say, I very much enjoyed the town volunteer and employee luncheon that was here last week. It, it really is nice to be able to see, you know, people that are working for the town in various capacities. You see names, you don't get to see faces. It was nice to be able to, to meet some people, give out some awards. Mr. Dutton did a really nice job with that as well, recognizing people and, letting people know that there are a lot more people out there that appreciate what they do than they probably hear or see, but it's always good to reinforce that, not only for keeping people engaged, but hopefully for people seeing that, so we can get more people engaged. We have openings, so, you know, hopefully people will, will take that, and it was, it was a great time. I didn't bring this up during the free cash allocation to the trust fund. I'm going to bring it up right now, just in my general comment. If people remember the conversations we had around the budget, I pushed extremely hard for us to be very aggressive in our revenues. I said if we came back with a free cash of, I would say, a very high amount, I think my quote was, "We should be summarily fired", $2.5 million in free cash. That, to me, is showing how we need to really reevaluate how we project our revenues. Think about this, all the work that we had to do to come up with about $275,000 for, some of it for the highway department, some of it for the school district. I think we spent yeoman's work on this, because we were told that we had a very tight budget. I don't really, I have not been able to find any town or city that uses free cash as a funding mechanism for reserves. They say free cash is free cash. So, with this number, granted, it's nice to see that we're able to put more money into reserves, but at some point, this is going to end. And I think we really need to reevaluate how we are budgeting our revenues, so that we don't go through the same cycle of having departments go very thin. I give them all the credit in the world, but I think personally, we're doing them a disservice. And I think in my head, and I'm probably wrong, we're talking probably close to $12 million in free cash roughly over the last six or seven years. And again, people are saying, "Well, that's a good thing, because that's quote-unquote 'found money', but think about all of the things that we could have done with 30% of that for the town." So, I'm really, you know, whatever you want to call me, I'm really not happy at this 2.5 million as a number. So, I'll be working with other councils as well, because I really want us to start looking at our revenue projections, because this is not the way to run the town. That's my own personal opinion. Thank you. I do not think we have an executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it?
Thank you.